...meeting. We called the meeting to order at six o'clock, went into executive session in which we discussed the potential agreement with the non-union personnel and voted, we'll discuss that a little later in the meeting. Also moved, the reason I asked you to leave, we forgot this part. We had to move an executive session to approve and release executive session minutes from March 5th of 2018, 19th, 23rd, August 6th, and August 20th of that same year. Approve and release the executive session minutes of June 11th, 2018. So that's been, they've been approve and release and we'll, we'll take action to that. We'll move next into the statement that says, as required by open meeting law, I inform that the town will be video and audio taping this, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. And we'll move on. Please one me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty, faith, and justice for all.
Next is weekly briefing and Chris, our usual update on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have two things this afternoon or this evening that I would like to mention. The first is on the sewer. So on the sewer work from Robert Howard, they have reported again that the one week look ahead for this week, they're doing main sewer crew number one will be on 39 on the west, west from Spencer's Trace. That is detoured in a main line sewer crew number two for the installation on 137. That also is a detour. Basically the same thing up through November 11th through the 15th and then even into the 11th, I'm sorry, the 18th through the 22nd. So we are detoring those. Hopefully the detour signs have been a little bit better. We've gotten some feedback and have tried to make those improvements. The second, I just got a note this evening before the meeting and I just wanted to take the, a moment to read this, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank our DPW personnel for doing the work at the replacement of the Harwich Elementary School. And Rick Travers, who I think is the facilities director over at the, the school, wrote this. Good afternoon, Chris. I want to thank. More than impressed with Link's approach to getting this job done and the actual implementation and execution of the removal of the structure by Boo, which Boo is Robert Barubi, so just, we do that a little too often in this business, and his crew. The communication from Boo and Link to myself was top-notch and the positive willingness from these, from them was extraordinary. These guys are on site right now, fine-tuning the ground with the, with the expectation that we will be able to hydro seed this week. I'm sure that you already know this, but your crew did a rock, is rock solid. What more can I share? Please pass along the praise and thanks and always a pleasure for sure, Chris. Thank you. Rick Travers. I just wanted to pass that along. I thought it was, it was a nice sentiment and he just.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks. We add to our thanks to Lincoln Crew for doing a good job and doing it in a timely fashion. Anyone else for weekly briefing?
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. Just reminding everyone, we have until November 15th to drop off anything for Cape Cod cares for our troops. That's in the front lobby, the list of what they are looking for. They're all small items, but that is on our website if anyone needs it. And then lastly, I will put a more personal thank you in the newspaper room. We've already sent our thank you notes, but for anyone who did not come or has not heard, the community center was clearly the place to be on Halloween. We were overflowing, which is exactly what you want your community center to be. We more than doubled the amount of children that we usually see. And with those children were parents and grandparents and volunteers from the Council on Aging and the community center was bursting at the seams. So I just wanted to thank the community, all made possible by donations from everyone around us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Good evening. Mary Maslowski. I'm a member of the planning board, as you know. Charlene Greenhalgh, the town planner, couldn't be here this evening, but she wanted me to make sure that everyone knew that the Cape Cod Commission Public Hearing has been continued for the West Harwich District of Critical Planning Concern. Before, it will be held before the full commission on Thursday, November 14th at 3:00 PM in the East Wing Conference Room, which is the old jail building at 3195 Main Street in Barnstable. So anybody that wishes to attend the remainder of the public hearing is welcome to attend on the 14th at 3:00 PM.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comments? That will move on to the consent. Ed? Sorry, looking outside.
No, I, I can't remember the date. I'd rather not do it. I'll do it next week. It's okay.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Larry. I don't know, Scott's here. I don't know if he wanted to. He, he did send over a text a little bit earlier about the school committee. Do you want to just report on that, Scott?
Sure. Just prior to this meeting, the school committee met.
I'm sorry, Scott, you need to formally introduce yourself.
Sure. Scott Carpenter, Superintendent, Montemay Regional. Just prior to this meeting, the school committee met to discuss, I know, one of the items that on the select board's agenda when it comes to applicant status for the Harwich Elementary School CPC grant application and in short, had voted to have the school district be an applicant and inviting the selectmen to be co-in it. Sort of long and short on it.
Okay. Thank you. As you suggest, we'll get into a larger discussion later in the agenda.
Exactly.
If not, no more public announcements, we'll move to consent agenda. Steve, you want to?
Do A in this, I believe, Don has asked it, B be considered in new business.
Okay.
Minutes, May 20, 2019, regular session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You pass and we'll then move B to new business, which, which comes next. And so let's talk about that, Don, as new business.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to make note of the fact that we had gotten onto a new process for about the last year and this kind of rolls back to a year ago. When we get these things, the charter asks, has two different thresholds. We have a four-fifths vote to reject a nomination for lower level employees and there is a requirement that we have a three-fifths vote or more to confirm a department head. As Mr. Ballantyne has been making the comment for a couple of years now, it's kind of difficult to know as opposed to what if you don't know who it is. And we had arrived at an understanding that the confidential packet would have the finalists, but we would not release any information about that, would just be for our edification. That hasn't happened, so I won't be voting for this. I don't object to her. I think she, she looks like she's impressive, but I just want to reiterate that I expect to see the information as to the, the other candidates because we, there's no way to dispose of our duties unless we know who, who it was who applied and as opposed to whom we would be confirming the recommendation.
Well, valid point because I've made the same point, Don, as you suggest. In this case, so can you bring us up to speed on the interview committee and give us some comfort that we're?
Yeah, I actually, I'll start and then I may defer to Joe. We did put in the packet that there were 45 resumes received. The screening committee did do some work. The only name that was presented to me was, was the one. So I, I take it that based upon their interviews, they didn't really think any, any of the other candidates rose to that level of being considered a finalist, if you would.
Okay.
But I think that's.
It indicates five. Ms. Chair, that's the reason I mentioned this because it indicated that there were five finalists.
Only five people interviewed, I believe, is what.
Yeah, well, those would be construed as finalists.
Only because they were important enough to interview.
Yeah.
Joe?
Well, yeah, what I would just add to what Chris has just indicated is that there were 45 applicants that were deemed qualified. We received over 80 applications in total. So it took quite a bit of time to parse through that. There was an initial round of interviews of five that myself, the deputy assess, excuse me, the assessing director and the finance director felt merited interviews. We were going to do a follow-up with one of those folks in the five, but were then notified that they took a position elsewhere. The assessing director and finance director felt that the remaining four candidates weren't up to snuff, so we went back, reviewed the applications again, additional applications that were received. And I believe the assessing director and finance director conducted at least four other interviews. I was not party to those based on time constraints, one of which is the candidate whose name is presented to you this evening. Take the words that you've offered and we'll add that to a process going forward, but the administrator is correct that we really didn't deem anybody other than the individual who's being presented this evening to be qualified as a finalist.
Okay. Steve?
What will we do here now that bring this back? Is that?
Well, we can, or we can take the recommendation and move forward.
I recommend that you vote it. We've been short-staffed.
And we've been, we've been trying to staff this for some time.
Well, I guess we have three, so.
You do. And I was going to say, I'm, I'm not going to vote against it, I'm going to abstain for it, but it's more of a statement for in the future.
Yeah.
There's no way for us to know what we're doing intelligently unless we have the finalists in front of us, so I wouldn't object to you making a motion.
And of course, Don has me because I've made the same point. We did, I think we need to move ahead on this one.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I don't want to lose.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Entertain a motion?
Move, we accept the recommendation to the appointment, from the town, from the town administrator, the appointment of Lisa Tanko Schwab to the position of assessing administrative assistant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Anyone in the audience care to weigh in? Ed?
You know, on the, the previous discussion, this, this is a position that is appointed by the town administrator. And so if he only interviewed one person, there's only one finalist. The screening committee is simply there to winnow down people and if they winnow down and only recommend one, then that's the, the only finalist. I'm not, I don't feel it's really within our purview to want to delve back into the pack of, of resumes that were turned in.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue the discussion. Carrie, three, three to one. Moving on to new business then, the second item is annual meetings with the board. And first up is Board of Health and.
Mr. Chair, before we, did we do the?
Playground.
Sewer work schedule?
Yeah.
Or, oh, we did it? Okay.
We did that. No, you get no reprieve, you so.
I was trying to hold it off for a second.
My name's Pamela Howell. I'm the chair of the Board of Health.
The mic.
I wanted to thank the selectmen, Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to meet with you tonight and particularly we want to thank liaison Larry Ballantyne for being such a steady.
Could you bring your mic down so, speak into it so, so it gets picked up? There we go.
Like, thank our liaison Larry Ballantyne for being a steady presence at our meetings. During this past, all our members have been sworn in and taken their state ethics course except for a couple of absences by one member who has since resigned. There have been no recurrent absences and all meetings are posted and advertised in accordance with the open meeting law. Also, meeting minutes are voted and available to the past meetings online as well as a hard copy to the, at the Health Department. 2019 has been a challenging year for the Board of Health on many fronts. Looking back at this year, in May, the Board of Health voted at the recommendation of the Recreation and Youth Department amendments relate regulation prohibiting smoking on workplaces and public places to include a ban on smoking on town-owned beaches, recreation areas, and other town-operated properties. After many conversations concerning the transition of East Harwich to municipal sewer-ing, the Board of Health has taken several actions. First, we voted to impose no permit fee for sewer connections. The Board of Health also issued its first waiver to allow a substandard septic system to remain in use until the connection of the sewer is made. We continue to make extensive request applications, but there are many factors to consider. We were approached by high school students to consider adding a flavor ban in the tobacco sales regulations. After six months of discussion among the board and tobacco retailers, a regulation update restricting flavored tobacco products to adult-only retail stores was adopted. This includes candy flavors as well as mint, menthol, and wintergreen. Updated tobacco sale regulations also include a cap on the number of tobacco retail stores in town. As well, new retail stores permitted under, after the regulations were adopted now have to comply with a 500-foot setback from schools and a 500-foot setback from other tobacco retailers. Finally, the Board of Health adopted regulations banning the sale of flavored vaping products in Harwich. This came a week before Governor Baker declared a public health emergency in September issuing a temporary vaping product ban statewide. This latter action banned the sale of all vaping products and devices for a four-month period to allow some time for the CDC to study the vaping-associated lung injuries. We voted to raise the legal purchase aids for tobacco products from 18 to 21 years old. This would cover sales to anyone in the town of Harwich. Other stats from 2019, 19 properties requested variances from the final, from the Title V, eight subdivisions were reviewed, three environmental impact reports were reviewed, three properties requested reconsideration of previous orders of conditions, public beaches request sampling variances, show cause hearings were held, three property requested extensions on septic upgrades, one food service establishment requested amendments on conditions, one discussion was held regarding allowing dogs on outside spaces of restaurants. A waiver was requested to use failed septic system until a sewer is available. At this time, I would like to thank the other board members, Matthew Cushing, MD, Ron Dal Giallo, DMD, Sharon Flager, MS, and our newest member, Matt Antoine. And we'd like to give our thanks to the former vice chairman Frank Boyle and the former Board of Health member Cynthia Beryl for their time and energy while they served. I also want to recognize the efforts of the Health Department staff, Megan Eldridge, Director Kathleen Tenaglia, Senior Health Agent Mark Palesley, Paselli, sorry, Health Inspector Jennifer Clark, Exes, Executive Assistant. These, the staff worked really hard to get the sewer system in place online to make it easier for everyone in the town to obtain it through our site. And they spent countless hours doing this and I really want to thank them for all their hard work. In closing, let me tell you that it's been an honor to serve in the town of Harwich this past year. Respectfully submitted Pamela Howell, RN.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Questions?
My comment is that, you know, Board of Health is, is a regulatory committee and so their decisions are not always well-loved by the applicants. And a committee of that type is critical that they treat the applicants respectfully. Remember they're their neighbors and hear their, their input, have a good discussion and, and resolve the situation. And have to do that within state regulations, with our, with our own bylaws and, and have that come out so it's understood. And Pam, you and your committee and Megan do that very well.
Thank you.
You've had some trying cases vaping in some of these and my hat's off to you. It's not, it's a great job.
Mr. Chair.
Don?
Ms. Chair, I have about 12 very difficult questions I'd like to pose to the chairman of the Board of Health.
I have an extra bedroom, Don.
I don't think that would be far enough away.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just, on the ban of smoking on town beaches, it says town beaches, recreation areas, and other town-operated properties. For the public to know, obviously if you're on the beach at Bank Street or one of our other beaches, it's not, it's prohibited on the beach, is it prohibited in the parking lot? That's a town-operated property.
I believe so.
Okay. And then if you walk through the parking lot, you get on a town road, is that considered a town-operated property?
Well, I don't think we went that far with that.
Okay. I mean, does the regulation specifically outline that or?
I, no. And we can, I can go back.
Maybe it should.
Yeah.
Because I can make that argument that you'd have to go walking up Bank Street and find a, a private road to, to walk off onto, you know.
I will, I'll match that.
And then the other thing, I know I've had a lot of, so with the issue of the sewers, ask this question is, I know in some, in some instances, it's permissible to place a sewer line closer to a water line if it's double.
Double lined.
Double lined. Is that a decision that the Board of Health makes or the staff, the director?
The staff.
Okay. Just so people understand that.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Our next annual report is the Board of Appeals.
Okay, good evening. Dave Ryer, Chairman. We currently have eight members of the board, a full complement of, of at five. We have three alternates. We can have two additional alternates, but frankly, eight is really enough since we let everybody participate in the, the hearings. I think if we had more than eight, we would have to start limiting it and it's going to sort of get kind of complicated. We have had, because of the eight, been able to have a full board of five members for every meeting this year. We could go forward with four, but you need four positive votes to grant relief and we much prefer to have the five. That way, if there's one member voting against, the applicant still can get relief if they convince the other four members to vote in favor. There's only four of us, one applicant would result in a denial of the petition. All of our members are sworn in and up to date with ethic training, ethics training. Regular meeting schedule in 2019. Through our September meeting, we had 37 applications, 29 special permits were granted, seven variances were granted, and in five of the cases, there was both a special permit and a variance granted. Those were for the sewer pumping stations. They needed a special permit for the building and a used variance for the, the pumping itself. And we had one request to overturn a decision of the building commissioner. That request was denied by the board and the building commissioner's decision was upheld. We did not include here the 20, I'm sorry, the five cases from our October meeting that now is concluded. We had four special permits, one variance at that meeting, all were granted. And that's the report. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Just a very general question. The numbers of, of the actions you've taken, are they, are that, are they pretty steady year to year or do you see any change going on?
No, I think it's pretty steady. People, you know, a lot of the homes are older, so they're coming in to redo them. We have a number of teardowns, especially south of 28. A few variances, we really don't have many variance requests. And this year, we had no 40B. Remember, last year, we had the 40B down on Route 28 and Habitat has now started on that one. Those generally are extended. We usually have to have four or five hearings on them. We have a lot of discussion, a lot of neighbors come out and a lot of concerns generally were able to work with Habit. Habitat is wonderful, I have to say. We've had some other applicants that have been good, but Habitat in particular is very receptive to comments. The town really has very little ability to deny a 40B, not that we would want to as a town, but we are able to put reasonable conditions on and we can very often satisfy some of the neighbors' concern by asking the applicant to put in, say, extra screening, landscaping to shut off some of the visual effects that they object to or maybe some of the noise issues that they anticipate. It's like anything, it's the, the neighbors love it, but not in their backyard. I mean, that's what it comes down to. So we try to work with them and the applicant to come to a reasonable solution. And some of the concerns are very legitimate and the applicants, when we, you know, address those generally are fairly responsive. If we have a, a safety issue, for example, on 28, it's not going to be an issue, but if they had a school pickup point, we might want a, a little bus shack with some signage on it. We have required that on some of our 40Bs in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next on your agenda is report from real estate and open space.
Good evening. Elaine Shovlin, Chair. Will report that we have one vacancy on our board, which we're all taking an active role in trying to recruit someone. We have excellent attendance at all our meetings. They, all our members have satisfied their conflict of interest training and have all been sworn in by town clerk. All our meetings and agendas are posted at the time they should be. The committee has made recommendations to the Affordable Housing Trust regarding properties that may be suitable for affordable housing development. And the committee has made a commitment to attend the Affordable Housing Trust meetings as often as possible and to work closely with them. Rios has also cosponsored two CPA requests this year for funding, which they cosponsored with Conservation Committee and Affordable Housing Trust and the other with Conservation Commission and in collaboration with Conservation Trust. Rios has presented a list of properties to the Board of Selectmen, recommended as priorities for conservation, housing, and water quality protection. These properties include town-owned, tax lien, and owners unknown. It continues to review, evaluate, and visit properties for the purpose of making informed recommendations to the board. The committee appreciates the support of Art Boden Housing Committee, Amy Usoski Conservation Agent, Charlene Greenaw, Town Planner, Michael La, Conservation Trust, and we also appreciate our liaison, Mr. Howell, who has been very helpful to us with some questions and concerns that we've had and we're building a working relationship there. And if you would just allow me one more comment, I'd like to recognize Catherine Green, who for five years was chair of our committee. And since I took over as chair, she has been very supportive and very generous with her time and with her help. When any time I asked her for advice, she was always willing to help. So I appreciate Catherine and I think that town should appreciate the work she did over the five years. She did encourage us to become more proactive as in the past, we waited for properties to come to us. Now we're out looking for them and that's because of her leadership and thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
I think people, maybe this, but your committee is a very hard-working committee.
Yeah.
A lot of details, going through titles, going for searches, and so it's not easy. It's, it's a hard-working committee and it's much appreciated.
And it's very satisfying, too. It's a, it's a great committee to be on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Comments? Any audience? Next on your agenda is vote to approve, excuse me, Housing Authority, John Stewart, I almost forgot you.
I'm moved to approve the Housing Authority.
You're too big to ignore, so.
John Stewart, Housing Authority. I believe you have a copy of my report in your packet, so I will touch on a few things that are not included in there. Some of our capital projects, we are doing the last of the windows in our family housing. We've had to replace a septic system in our Long Pond units, and we are looking at doing some reciting at our group home on Depot Road West. One of the other things that's new is.
John, can I back you up? What you mean, reciting, redesigning, what's?
Reciting.
Reciting.
Yes, as part of a capital project. The State has launched their online application and wait system. It's called the Champ, and it's a bit of a nightmare at the moment, but they're working the bugs out of it, and so, everything is online for all the applications, all the wait lists. Everything is there.
Okay. Any questions for, for John? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not so much of a question, but in general, if we ask the Planning Board to come in, it wouldn't be the Town Planner. If we asked the Board of Health to come in, it wouldn't be the Health Director, so it'd be kind of helpful in the future years if, if the Board itself.
Okay.
You know, showed up.
I've always done it, but yeah, so, I will let them know.
But outside of that, you're doing a great job.
John, I'm not sure I under, I'm not sure I got your point there.
Organizationally, when you're getting the Executive Director, you're not getting a policy body.
Oh, I see, you want the membership to show.
If it's a yearly meeting to discuss policy issues, then.
Yeah, I got you.
I'll round them up and bring them in next year.
Ed?
I note that, you know, four, currently have four Board members.
Yes, we are missing a Board member.
And is the one you're missing an elected, or the governor's appoint?
No, it's an elected.
Okay.
So, if anybody's interested. Any other questions?
John?
Yeah, Ed's question brings to mind the fact, it's not just anybody that's interested, we gotta hold an interlocking meeting.
Yes.
To actually appoint someone.
But.
Because that's our obligation.
Yes.
John, just very briefly, outline the process for us and for people listening, so if someone's interested.
As far as?
As, as being nominated and being, being elected as a Board member.
Well, first, they have to show the interest. Typically, they come to several of our meetings, and then, they meet with, with you folks in a subcommittee, and then, we have a joint meeting, and they are either appointed or not.
Okay. Ed?
That's it, if we go through the process of making appointment to fill the position.
Right.
The other way is, they can, when the papers for election are out, they can take out nomination papers and.
Correct.
Get the requisite number of.
Let it stay vacant for that amount of time.
We have to appoint before the selection coming up. Yeah, I just want to be clear for asking to fill vacancy, if people understand what the procedure is. So, the best procedure, if we're interested, is go to the website, find out when your next meeting is, and show up.
Exactly.
And you'll learn, you can go from there.
Find out what it's all about, and we go from there.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Those are our reports. Next on your agenda is vote to approve the Administrator's recommendation to grant permission to N-Star to install one forty-foot, fully owned, full labeled, I twenty-nine-five on side of the Town Road, Oak Street, Harwich. And this, I take it, is going to help the solar activity at the golf course, so it's a favorite of ours, but go ahead.
You said it best. We would like to see, because it's going to benefit the town.
Mr. Chair.
Ed?
I'd move that we approve the Administrator's recommendation to grant permission to N-Star to install one forty-foot, fully owned, pole labeled, one slash twenty-nine dash five on side of Town Road in Oak Street, Harwich.
Second.
Second. And I know, Chris, you spent considerable time negotiating this, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more, any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. See is Declaration of Selectmen's Holidays. We're getting into the Thanksgiving and Christmas season, so, Chris, you want to review this for us?
Certainly, at that time of year, Mr. Chairman, because Christmas falls on a Wednesday and New Year's on a Wednesday as well, recommending, and certainly, just by contract, for folks that may not be as aware, by contract, the Selectmen can declare any days they want as a Selectmen's holiday, so in addition. Usually, if a holiday falls on a Friday, it's a little easier to do Thursday, because it's not in the middle of the week. So, here, I think in the, in the time I've been the Administrator, I think you've done as many as two days. Here, the request is just for one day, to have a half-day for Christmas Eve and a half-day for New Year's Eve, so the facility would close at noon time. This, too, helps the rank and file, to be able to make plans for the holidays, to be able to travel. And then, one of the things that we also realize is that when we're trying to set the agenda, that becomes a little bit of a challenge when we don't have a week to really do it in. So, with your discussions, Mr. Chairman, we have come up with that we would call short agendas for November twenty-fifth, December second, and December twenty-third. So, we will meet, the Board will meet, but then have shorter agendas, and then, we would ask to have the meeting on December thirtieth. I don't think the Board has ever met between Christmas and New Year's.
No.
So, that day would be a non-meeting day. So, that's the suggestion by myself and staff to help with the holidays.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd move that we approve the Administrator's recommendations on holidays and designation of our meetings during the holiday season.
Second. Any more discussion? Any comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
It's passed. Next on your agenda is vote to approve the appointment of Stephen Duffy to the Harwich Accessibility Rights Commission as a full member. Expires June thirty-twenty-one. Don, you have any comments from the Interview Committee?
The only one I have to mention, Mr. Chair, is the reason it's done this way is, I did not participate in the interview, telling Mr. McCaskill to go ahead and do it. It was not adequately posted. We've discussed that for the future. I have no objection to this, and if he were here, I'm sure he would have spoken in favor of it.
Yeah, okay.
Because he submitted.
So, this is a discussion that we've had on that, we'll follow up. Any other discussion? Anyone? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we appoint Stephen Duffy to the Disability Rights, or what's it, we calling it now?
Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee.
Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee.
Six thirty-twenty-one.
Yes, prefer the term to last until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Second. I appreciate Stephen stepping forward. We know Matt and I both made a plea last week that we desperately need to fill this Committee, so that's one, and Noel's application, he said he did, because we needed him, and we do. We need more, so the plea's still out there. This is an extremely important Committee, it's one we're regulatory bound to have, and we have had a hard time keeping a large enough group to have a quorum. So, keep those, more applications. Ed?
Well, you know, he, he may have been the only person to step forward, but I've known Steve for quite some time, and he is a thoughtful and considerate individual, and I think he will do a very good job in this Committee.
Yep. I'm positive of that, but thank you, Ed. Okay, next on your agenda is vote to approve winter boat.
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
We're on a different track. Chris, you want to go to the next on the agenda is boat storage?
I'll defer to John Rendon for this, the Harbor Master.
Good evening, John Rendon, Harbor Master. Before you is a request for the Board to approve a three-year license for winter boat storage at Saku Tucket Harbor. I was here before you, I don't know, a month ago or so, asking permission to submit a public notice to solicit interested firms or parties who are interested in leasing property at Saku Tucket for winter boat storage. As I know the Board knows, we've had a long history of, of providing a license with Allen Harbor Marine Service, used to be over at Allen Harbor Facility, and once we went into a public access facility agreement with the State, we had to move that to Saku Tucket. Their license expired May of this year, and so, we put out another solicitation, and we expanded two areas. One area will be on the Downey property, the former Downey property, and another area will be west parking lot of Saku Tucket. The packet that I provided you has a copy of the bid form that was submitted, along with the site map indicating the two sites that we're talking about. We did it based upon a square footage, and so, we had two bids, one from Allen Harbor Marine Service, one from Harwich Port Boatyard, each bid on a separate parcel, so Allen Harbor Marine bid on parcel A, which is the Downey property parcel, and Harwich Port Boatyard bid on parcel B, which is the west lot at Saku Tucket. And I believe the license agreement that we put together, obviously, was submitted to Administration and was sent to Legal for review. They commented on it, made a suggestion, which we added to the license agreement, and then, we got, you know, the signatures. Does any questions?
Questions for John? I mean, it looks complete to me, is there any? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ed?
I'd move that we approve granting a license for winter boat storage to Allen Harbor Marine Services and Harwich Port Boatyard Incorporated for use of portions of Saku Tucket Harbor.
Do you have a second? Johnny, just, it always raises people's interest to say that Legal made a comment. There's a pretty short, they just wanted a way to get out after three years, I think.
That's correct.
After one year.
After one year. The last paragraph, and Mr. Howell is correct, it's, the last paragraph states it in the, if the town, something comes up at the town and.
These are options.
It leaves the option to cancel it, yes.
Yeah, that would be good to point that out. Don?
Yeah, I just want to explain myself, because the license agreements are fine as far as they go. I've just had expressed this before, that the Town Meeting had actually had an extensive discussion about whether to compete with local boat storage yards, so I'm not going to vote for this, but not because there's anything wrong with the format.
Okay. Now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Boat storage that's happening down at the harbor, the in-water, is that being taken up?
It is. We have several boats. I don't have a current count. I think it's a handful of boats who, to go to the winter term, we call it. We don't call it winter boat storage, it's, it's a winter term, and yeah, I think more and more will start to, to take advantage of that.
Thank you, John. Next is amend the Conservation Preservation Committee funds for the Harwich Community Playground. So, Chris, he wanted, and I know Scott gave an introduction to this before, but.
I'll get things started, I guess, and then turn it over to maybe Scott, if he wants to add commentary to it. The original application that went to CPC was by a PTO organization. I did include in the packet the material that technically, the property is owned by the Town of Harwich and is leased to the Monomoy Regional School District, and we do have an agreement that outlines that arrangement. So, it was believed that, and I do appreciate the comments of the Chair of CPC had brought this to my attention, that in order for an applicant to have a project like this, it really should be, the Board of Selectmen needs to be signed off on this, and to have Monomoy Regional School as a co-applicant, and then, obviously, the role of the PTO is important as well. So, what's before the Board tonight is just to basically amend the application that was submitted to CPC to include the Board of Selectmen as the applicant. Scott has indicated at the beginning that Monomoy Regional School is already the, would be the co-applicant, and then, the role of the PTO to continue with the project, so that way, I believe their presentation is tomorrow night to CPC, to request for funding, so that way, it can be before CPC in a more legally appropriate manner, is probably the best way to say that.
In essence, we need to be the applicant, because we own the land.
Yes.
David?
Mr. Chairman, Dave Nixon, Chairman of CPC, couple things. Through you, Mr. Chairman, and Scott, is that correct, that they're, that the, your Board is going to be the co-applicant?
That's, that's what they want, I guess.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing is, the next thing is, the application itself, the PTO has no standing in this. The Town of Harwich is the applicant, so therefore, the project manager should be from the Town of Harwich, as I understand it. I talked to Boston, I had a long conversation about this. My recommendation to the Selectmen would be have Chris be the project manager, and I just saw his reaction.
Shaun Libby sounds like a good name to me, but.
And, and Chris and I have a good working relationship, but we're going to do battle on a couple of other issues. I request that the Assistant Town Administrator be the project manager. I'm assuming he's going to be looking at.
Just, just on that topic.
Go ahead.
Under the procurement law, that any time you do a construction project, you're supposed to have someone that has the credentials to do that. We have two people in the organization that have the credentials to be a project manager by state law. One is the Town Engineer, is a byproduct of being an engineer, which is Griffin Ryder, and then, the second person is Shaun Libby. So, I didn't say that, I said that a little kiddingly, but only half-kiddingly. He would be a person that has run projects for us before and would make sense to, to run it. I believe the threshold by state law, though, is like a million dollars, where this is under, we would have a little bit of discretion in that, but certainly, I think the ultimate goal is to get it approved by CPC, and at least, I would suggest subtly, or, you know, maybe strongly, one way or another, that if we're going to move forward, that I think Shaun Libby could oversee the construction of this project, and certainly, work closely with the PTO. The Board will remember when the library was doing their work, Shaun worked very well with the library trustees during that painting project, so Shaun has the ability to, to work with a group to make sure it comes to successful completion.
Mr. Chairman, to the Town Administrator, I have a document here, it's the whole project that they're proposing tomorrow night, so are you willing to give this to Shaun and have him ready to make a presentation tomorrow night?
He right now is in Mexico, so it's humanly impossible to accomplish that.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's up to the Town Administrator.
Let me, let me say that, I'm not sure, that needs to be decided tonight.
There's a lot of information to read in this document, sir.
No, but I mean, for us to approve being the applicant, do we have to decide all the, those details tonight?
Yes, you do.
We can decide going forward.
Well.
Oh, Steve?
The timing of the meeting, David?
That's correct. I mean, we start our presentations tomorrow, and they're one of the first. I mean, we start our presentations tomorrow, and they're one of the first.
Okay, Ed?
So, you're explaining, you're telling us that the project, it's specified the project manager has to be the one to do the presentation?
That's correct. That's in the application.
Okay.
Don?
I try, I'm sorry, I tried to make this as painless as possible.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see how we get over this.
As we go through, there are certain heat cups that happen.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other question I have, let me start off by saying, listen, I didn't spend two and a half years of my time when the other one was built to see no one get to play on anything anymore. There's nothing out there. Something has to happen.
Right.
With that in mind, though, I want to make sure we do this. And one thing that comes to mind was that in the lease agreement, the town is indemnified by the liability policy from the school, which holds sole liability on the elementary school and its property environs.
That's correct.
Legal opinion about what this does if we do this? I'm assuming we'd have to build it and turn it over immediately under the lease, but do we have a legal opinion relative to what happens and how, because I asked that question because we've never been the applicant on anything to the library, Brooks Academy. It's always been a discrete element that's made the request, not the town of.
That's the other, I've asked for a legal opinion on that, so that's the other thing we're waiting for?
Yeah, that is, the issue that was raised was slightly different, but I can ask to have it expanded.
But we have a group here that spent a lot of time putting this together. We can't delegate that presentation to your committee at this point?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
I'll see a way to get...
Are there other agended presentations in the future?
Well, yes. There's 15 applications.
Any way of resequencing them?
We, we've done a lot of that to get the board to meet the criteria we have as far as the deadline's concerned, so...
I only ask that because I don't want it to fail on technicality that they didn't show up on the first day, but you're still holding other meetings about others. So, the answer might be to just open it and table it for future agenda.
Chris, and I think Scott, we're trying to figure a way to move ahead on this.
And I'm trying to do the same thing, work with you, yes.
I mean, my suggestion would be, I'm planning on attending anyway tomorrow night. I can certainly sit with Mr. Tavano, who I think is from the, from the PTO and do the initial presentation. I mean, the, at least in my experience, CPC generally asks for additional information after the first session.
Yes.
I would presume that that would probably happen again. And then, we can get Mr. Libby up to speed, and when final decisions are made in December or January, he can be more prepped and be told that he's going to be assigned to oversee this project.
This is the fun part of this process?
Ed?
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. That's what I need, more paperwork.
But, Mr. Chair, we'd still need the legal opinion at some point.
Well, we're, that's in the process, get the legal opinion. Are you, we have Scott and Mr. Tavano, if you wanted to comment on that to be sure we're headed in the right direction?
So...
Because we want to see this applied, application made, that's the key.
Right. So, again, Scott Carpenter, Superintendent Monomoy Regional. Just to read the board the full motion that the school committee made just prior to this meeting when they met, it was moved that the Harwich Elementary PTO request for the Monomoy Regional School Committee to be the co-applicant with the Board of Selectmen for the new play, Community Playground at Harwich Elementary School, and to maintain the current Community Playground Committee, and Justin Tavano was the project manager for the CPC Act funding application for the Harwich Community Playground at Harwich Elementary School. And as I said, it was voted by the committee unanimously. The, I think, you know, I think if the argument is that it has to be someone from Harwich that is the project manager, Justin is from Harwich, and Justin is somebody who has been shepherding this project forward for the, you know, for the PTO and for the families of Harwich Elementary School. And I know that Justin is quite prepared to go and present tomorrow.
I think David's point was...
The definite, I don't know if the definition, but the intent of the law, again, for certain projects over a certain threshold, which, again, this is under, you have to have a supervisor's construction license, that's, or be a PE. So, that's, it does have a term of art, and I'm just not that familiar with Mr. Tavano. But, like I said, Shaun...
But Shaun will be back. We can get to start, is what you're saying.
We can certainly get started.
I think too, to just share the parallel, because in Chatham, we have been, you know, we're sort of, the Chatham Elementary is sort of one year ahead in a project. So, you know, so a year ago, they went to the Chatham CPC to look at replacing the playground at Chatham Elementary School, where the Chatham Elementary School was the applicant. The school district, you know, went and, our facilities director was largely the person that has been working through the construction of the playground with the, with the contractor that was bitted, or that, you know, won the ultimate bid for the, for the construction of the project. So, you know, so I, you know, again, I, I don't want things to get hung up on semantics. At the end of the day, I want to make sure that, you know, the kids in our, in our community have a playground, you know, to, to use at school, to use on the weekends, to use in the summertime. But I also want to make sure that, you know, there are things that I know the playground committee, committee were very specific in their wants and hopes, and, you know, to have an accessible playground, you know, not to just, you know, put up a playground, but to make sure that all children that go to Harwich Elementary School can access the, you know, the, the different playground equipment. So, again, I think we've got a very qualified person to go and make the presentation to the CPC.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Don, and then Steve?
Mr. Chair, it's not a matter of semantics, though. Justin's not an employee of either the school system or the town, and the project manager would be an employee.
That's correct.
Steve?
This is a little off the, the subject at the moment, but it, the, how is the Chatham project being funded? And is the proposal here to have CPC be the sole funding source for this project?
It's funded very similarly to this one, where the CPC funded almost $300,000 for that project with a chunk of money that the Chatham PTO had raised through a variety of fundraisers. You know, similar things happening here, where we have the Harwich Elementary School PTO, one of the reasons they became the initial applicant is that they had been the one going through, you know, doing the fundraising and raised a huge amount of money last year at a school fund run, intend to do more of that this year, and I imagine as this application moves forward to do other different fundraising initiatives.
So, beyond the, through you, Mr. Chairman, beyond the, the demos, which I understand the school district will absorb?
Correct. We had a vote at our school...
The school district is not funding any of this?
At, at the moment, it's not part, we're not, we're not building it into the FY21 budget. It's not in our current budget.
Is there any discussion of that? The reason I ask the question is because, as I understand the agreement, it's, the facility, once built, is under the control of the school, certainly during school hours. So that, you know, the, a person who simply lives in the town, you know, they can't use it until after school. So, there, it wouldn't surprise me if some people raise a hand and say, why isn't this more on the play of the school district, rather than just, you know, the town or CPC or whatever? So, just a question out there.
Okay. Chris, and then Dave.
Just because that question has come up already, and that was the question that was exactly posed to Attorney Giorgio about, by restricting use, would that create an issue in terms of funding through CPC, at least verbally? And he was going to do additional research on it. He did not see that as an issue because school is not in session for a large period of time when you look at things in sequence, and that it would, because it would be available off times. And actually, one thing, by having it now be conceivably more ADA accessible, it would be more accessible than the old structure was, just because of the nature of the, the construction.
It's just a question that a number of voters have...
Absolutely.
No, outside of the legal, people are going to be raising that question. Dave, and then Janelle?
Could I have that in writing, please?
That's what we're trying to get.
That's what he's working on.
We'll get that. That's our, that's our task at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Janelle?
Hi, I just have a question.
Introduce yourself formally.
I'm sorry, Janelle Brown.
As a former selectman, you know this.
Yep. I have a question regarding the, the use, really, and the control of the playground. The fact that the school committee was able to shut down the playground, and I know that Scott wanted it to stay open for that weekend, so the townspeople did have a chance to say goodbye, and it was not open, and a lot of people were upset by that. And Mr. Ford just brought up the fact that, you know, hey, the school, you know, will control it during school hours, but in the lease agreement, is there any kind of verbiage that says that the town does actually have some sort of jurisdiction over non-school hours, the use of it, and that, that the school committee does not have the ability to shut it down again, or to dictate the hours of use for general public?
Chris, maybe you can review the leasing, the IMA?
Yeah, actually, the IMA that was signed in December by both parties did two things. One, it actually...
By both, as the school board and the...
Monomoy Regional and the Board of Selectmen, that's correct. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Did contemplate two things. One, to actually improve grounds or structures, and it specifically says castle in the cloud. So, both entities knew that, that they were contemplating doing that, if by mutual consent, both parties agree. In terms of the use, Monomoy shall have peaceful and quiet use of the fields on the Harwich side exclusively during school hours for student use to facilitate the education programs of students. Harwich shall not schedule events on the fields during normal school hours. So, the implied in that is anything outside of school hours is the jurisdiction of the recreation commission.
So, technically, castles in the clouds could not have been shut down that whole weekend, in hindsight. Just something to think about.
Yeah. Dave?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing to that question. When I went through and did the research on that, I saw the documentation in the minutes, but there was no signatures on it. So, I don't know what that means.
We did, we did find the signature.
Is that an informal?
You did find it, yeah. I know that, too.
Well, the state, there's no state requirement, as far as that is concerned. So, is it a policy of the town? Or is it a, an agreement between just the town and the district?
I think right now, it's an agreement between the town and the district.
So, that has the ability to be changed if necessary?
If both boards agree to, yes. Justin?
Good evening, Justin Tavano, currently listed as the project manager for the playground. I received a phone call last week from the Chairman of the CPC, Mr. Nixon. We had a conversation where he was questioning the validity of the PTO as the applicant. And part of our conversation suggested that if there were to be a transfer of the applicant, potentially to the Board of Selectmen with the school district as a co-applicant, regardless of when that transfer took place, it was, I was told that regardless of that, I'd still be able to be the person who presented on Tuesday evening by the chairman. So, I'm just looking for some clarification as to what potentially changed and why I might not be able to be the presenter for that on tomorrow night.
Chris?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I've acted as, you know, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen on different applications. So, what I would do is formally say it's the application of the Board of Selectmen, and oh, by the way, I have my person here to explain the project. So, you should plan on being there tomorrow night, and you will be the primary presenter. I will be formally the applicant on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
And I think, David, that makes sense, because then we can move to the project managers as we go forward. If she can said yes, Justin, so I think we have a plan. Any other comments?
Tina Games, Vice Chair of the Monomoy Regional School Committee. I just wanted to get clarification, just to make sure I'm understanding this. Our vote tonight was to be joint applicants, and we expected to have some say, but it sounds like we're not getting, are you reading this correctly?
I think my reading is, is that we have to be the applicant legally, and we're asking for the support from the high school, the school, or the elementary school, and giving this direction going forward. Because I understand the process, since it's our...
But I think we voted to be co-applicants. Is that correct? So, this is a little unclear to me.
Ed?
As the chairman, it says it's our property, so it's our application, but it's your project. We have had no interaction on design or decision on what it's going to be. You've done that for us, and will continue to advise us on if there are any changes that need to be made, on what are acceptable and reasonable changes. Because we don't, have not been in touch with the project, and really don't, aren't in a position to weigh in on whether a change we'd approve had, would have any benefit or not to the educational program we're trying to achieve.
In saying that, your chore will be to convince the CPC of the, of the project's total value and so on, so you still have the applicant to, as any other applicant has to do, if you're using CPC funds.
Right. Okay. And I, and this goes without saying, the playground committee has put a lot of work into this, and, and my concern, there's a whole educational component to this, and I don't want that to get lost in the procurement process.
Steve?
I, I don't think that is, Tina. I, you know, I don't, it, we're just trying to facilitate, and Dave, he, he's trying to go by the guidelines that are in place for the distribution of the money that they have. And, and so, as a result, here, we've got this sort of a little convoluted joining, but all the work that's been done, the last thing we, we want to do is step in the way of the work that's been done. So, you know, and I, I agree with that. I mean, going forward here, you, you guys drive the train on the project, what's needed in the project, how it evolves, all those very important components, which we're not in a position to...
Your concern's not us. Your concern is CPC and in-town meeting.
Right. Okay. I just, I just know that the votes that we took, we had Chatham members of the school committee vote on this, and I feel, I just want to make sure I've got clarity about this.
I, I think one of the things in the agreement, you know, Scott and I actually worked on this a while before, is by mutual consent. So, the way I view this project is, the project design was done by the efforts of the group to come up with the design. It's very typical that once you design something, you then turn it over to someone to actually construct it. So, Shaun Libby will just do the actual construction. I don't think there's going to be any wholesale changes or any like that to the application. It's just more, it's traditional that once you design something, it then gets turned over to people to actually oversee and vote.
Don, and then Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be, to be clear.
Yep.
If this were at the high school, and if this were being funded entirely by the school budget or by some volunteer group, then you have the right to make that vote, but the town, the town leases you the property. It has to be consistent with whatever it is that we have to abide by. And by going through the CPC, you have to be aware that you may not get the whole magnitude of the project. It may be funded in part. So, whatever you voted has to have a recognition that you're on a leased property and that you're asking somebody else for money to do it.
Right. Yeah, and that, and that, again, that was part of the application, as I understood it. The fundraising efforts, we're continuing to look for grants, so we were prepared for all of that.
Right. All we're doing is initiating the process for you.
Okay.
We're helping you initiate the process, and then go through the next steps.
All right. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Dave?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Clarify something for me. Again, I'm trying to follow the guidelines. The Town of Harwich is going to be the applicant. The Town of Harwich is going to do the procurement process, not the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Dan Torek, I live in West Harwich, and I'm not speaking as a finance committee member. Please. Just an observation... Just an observation. We know that the CPC application process begins with an organization. They submit an application to the CPC. That application is reviewed, acted upon by the CPC, and either voted, approved, or disapproved. Then that application goes to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen act on that application.
Excuse me, it goes to the town meeting. It comes to us, and we can give our support or not, but we're not a deciding factor in that. The next decision's made at town meeting.
But still, the board is going to be acting on its own application.
No, we're not at that point. Once it's applied, with all CPC articles, it actually has some kindness and procedure. They bring it to us and ask if we support it or not, as just a political statement. The town meeting makes the decision whether to support it or not.
So the selectmen do not give it an up or down?
We do not.
Okay.
Pardon? Ed, and then Don. Ed?
We vote to whether to support it or not. But we, once a project has been approved and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to be presented at town meeting, we can't stop it. It's the one organization, it's like a petition article.
Yeah.
We have no ability to stop it. There is a crazy notion that it could be approved by town meeting, which is essentially approving the appropriation. And we could, as a board, choose not to have it built and just leave the money sitting there. But I don't imagine too many people would make it through the next election if it happened.
Mr. Chairman, that has never happened, so everybody here can understand that it has never happened.
Initially, I was concerned about the perception that might create in the community about the board.
Supporting its own, yeah. We don't have that power.
Thank you.
Janelle?
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
So just looking at the hours that the school uses it, 180 days a year, 1,260 hours. There are 8,760 hours in a year, and if it's closed for 12 months, that's 4,380 hours. So if the town is being the applicant, but is relying on the school to design and be in charge of this playground, the public actually has access to the playground for the majority of the hours. I would ask that the board rethink that. The number is astronomical. It is a huge ask. And all of you have seen bids for many years. You've all been in some sort of government for a long time. I'm sure you see that this number is outrageous. And I would ask you to rethink the number. I would ask you to rethink the control of this application and to make the number. And also think about, you know, not putting that much control with the Monomoy Regional School District for this playground project, because I do think it is a town asset as well. And really, it should be a joint decision, not solely put on PTO and Monomoy Regional School District.
Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
My only comment on that, Janelle, is that the control's kind of an interesting issue. I'm not going to touch that. One aspect to coming into process that David just asked, by putting it through this town as applicant, we'll have, we'll go through the normal procurement process, which then will force, or not force, but will result in going out for bids with competing organizations. And so we may find that that price is, maybe we find a better price going forward. But that's part of the process going forward, is to look at that.
It's still an ask from the CPC, is my point.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good point. Well, we need to watch that. Noreen?
Larry, you kind of half answered the question I was going to ask, and you answered to the previous speaker. So just in terms of process, with all the parties involved, as this works its way through the process, assuming it gets CPC approval, do I understand that in May at town meeting, somebody's going to show up with a completed bid? That's all I-
Dave, you can make that happen, right? That will be our plan, yes. I'll play light on that, because we have time to do that. Yes. Any other comments? Hey, Ed?
Well, and the reason why that is our hopeful plan is because once the project's approved and funded, we would like to see it go up as quickly as possible. We don't want to go through, after approval, have to go through another long-delayed bidding and design process before it gets built. There's nothing there.
Noreen was actually focusing on something quite different, and dear Lord, I hope that's the plan for everything we go to town meeting for here on. We keep getting ourselves into trouble with, we think it'll cost this, and then getting an approval, and then finding out that we don't have the money. So, yeah, we're going to go out because we want to have a solid figure, so the town meeting knows what it's going to be.
Is there any more discussion? If not, anyone care to make a motion?
Contingent on getting the legal advice?
Contingent on getting the legal advice.
Okay. Contingent on getting legal advice. Community Preservation Committee funds for Harwich Community Playground Board of Selectmen to be applicant, and Monomoy Regional School District is co-applicant. Discussion and possible vote. So I move that we go forward with co-applicant request for the playground at the elementary school.
I think applicant, just to be legal.
Just leave it as applicant? Okay, so we're not going to refer to it as such? Okay. As applicant to the Community Preservation Committee for the new playground.
Okay, so second?
I'll second it.
Okay. More discussion? Ed?
Well, just, you know, a comment over the issue of designing it. I remember quite a number of years ago, we had a project in front of us that was presented to CPC, and it's the ballfields behind the community center. And there was a lot to do about whether the design was right, and a lot of attempts to make it cheaper by, I think, a number of people who really didn't understand the process and what was needed in designing a ballfield. And unfortunately, that's what got approved, and it went into construction. And we found out that what the contractor that was hired for the price that was approved, which wasn't sufficient, really didn't know how to grade a ballfield. So we had to spend some additional money out of the town's general funds to bring in another contractor to regrade it. And in order to bring it in under price, we wound up with an irrigation system out there that is really not up to doing the job, nor well-designed to be adequately maintained. So I have absolutely no problem in letting people who have researched issues and understand what's needed being the main players in doing a design of a project like this.
Okay. Or, Dave? Yes?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, through you. Steve, can you include the district as co-applicant?
Certainly.
We can. I was concerned about being-
It would make more sense.
I mean, you're the driving force on the legal part of that. You want to just amend that to-
It'd be the Monomoy School District, right?
Right.
Okay. So a motion to approve the town or Board of Selectmen and the Monomoy Regional School District as co-applicants to the Community Preservation Committee for funding for the-
Okay. So second?
Second.
Any more discussion? I was only concerned, Dave, because you made the point of being applicant. We're still working with the school, but we'll-
Mr. Chairman, Hugh? Hugh Drummond, I'm a taxpayer. You're going to vote tonight on this application to CPC for, what is it, $626,000? Do you know what they're proposing, what they're going to do with that money?
No, what I'm saying is, it goes, look, what I'm saying is, going through CPC, we'll go through a procurement process, and I have no idea whether that's the right number or not. That's what we're asking to do the next time.
But do you agree with the overall proposal of what they're going to do? There's going to be 10 parking spaces. I don't know how many of the elementary children drive.
Mr. Chairman, you should be done in that process.
That goes to CPC. They're going to vet all those discussions, Hugh. We're just going to make it, we're starting the process.
Okay. Don't, we did it the whole, stop digging.
Okay. Oh, Steve?
What this table is to move forward, that's what this is. And once it gets before the CPC, all these questions will be vetted, and you'll have an opportunity to do the same.
John?
I don't want to drag it out. As I said, I have an interest in making sure it gets built. But if that's the motion, I've been saying for years, when everybody's responsible for everything, no one's responsible for anything. If they're a co-applicant and we're a co-applicant, all that matters is the motion that passed. None of this discussion will follow it. So someone's got to be in charge, and if that's not being made clear, I can't vote for it.
Okay. There we go. See, that was my point going forward, because I, Dave, you help me out on this, because I thought initially we had to be the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Give me some guidance on that, because I'm getting two different signals.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's this town property, town property falls under the jurisdiction of the town administrator. So as an element of the responsibilities of the town administrator is the oversight of the town property. Once the board gives me direction and says, this is the town property, we want to see this happen, then administration will make that happen. Consistent with procurement law, we need to find the right person to act as project manager. So if you want to include in your motion that it would be done through administration in coordination with the schools, as I-
I'm more careful with us being the applicant.
In the lease, that's exactly the way it's put, in its agreement between-
A mutual agreement between the two parties.
Parties. Right.
So if I can ask you to withdraw this, make us the applicant, working within the parameters, Chris.
Okay.
Try again, sorry.
Are you going to be okay with that?
We're getting different signals on this.
So to move forward with the application to the Community Preservation Committee, the applicant being the town slash Board of Selectmen for the new playground at the elementary school.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. That simplifies it. Any more discussion? If not, in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Abstain. One abstention. So three, four.
Three, zero.
So we'll move ahead.
Chris, can I have that copy back?
You already gave me one, so I have one in the office. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next on your agenda is joint meeting, the Board of Selectmen, Capital Outlay Committee, Finance Committee, Budget Calendar. Chris, you want to?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board, when you laid out your budget moron timeline, actually put in a kind of an opportunity to get an early look. And you have a joint meeting, as you indicated, with Monomoy, Cape Tech, the Finance Committee, and Capital Outlay to discuss the following issues. One was the state of the town slash Board of Selectmen budget message, so if you want to handle that with Mr. Chairman. The second would be for Monomoy and Cape Tech to talk about their initial budget look and enrollments, and then to have the Finance Committee talk about its priorities and the capital budget requests. I'm prepared to speak tonight to the capital budget in a little bit more detail, the Capital Outlay Committee, which the chairman was not able to be here tonight. I do see some members of the committee. I can talk about the capital outlay, and then just outlook for 2020.
Okay.
But I would suggest that we maybe get the two superintendents to kind of do their initial overview. I know they're both ready to do so.
Let's do that, then you'll have to stay around for the whole.
Yeah.
Who wants to take the lead? Bob will give you the honor, since Scott's already been at the stand.
Bob Sanborn, Superintendent of Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. If I could just briefly say that on Thursday, November 7th, we're going to be entertaining all 7th and 8th graders at our tech night from 5:30 to 8 o'clock, so that they can check out our facility. So for anybody with a 7th or 8th grader, come on over to Cape Cod Tech in our last year in the old building. I was told to really give a look ahead and also a little bit on enrollment, if I understand my purpose for my visit. Our enrollment has been declining for several years until this year. I'm happy to say that we're up 47 students at Cape Cod Tech for the first year in many years. I can't say the same for the town of Harwich. Harwich had 77 students in 2016 and '17 at Cape Cod Tech, 67 in 2018. And then 2019, which is the October 1 enrollment that serves as the foundation for the 21 budget, is down to 58 students. So although we don't view that as a positive, from a financial perspective for the town of Harwich, for our budget this year, that is going to have a depressing amount on the cost for the new school in FY21, because that's done on an enrollment percentage as the ultimate- We had about a 6% budget, which obviously, that's not where we're going to end up, but that's a preliminary budget figure. I do see us coming in in the 2% to 3% increase range when all is said and done. So the town of Harwich, in the last two years, went from 13% of our enrollment to 11% of our enrollment last year, and now it's at about 9.4%. So those percentages are going to be applied. Obviously, on the operating budget assessment, there's other factors. To the loan on the new facility, which, just to remind everybody in the audience, is a 20-year level principal, which means a declining amortization schedule, given steady enrollment. So your assessment of enrollment percentage would have been less this coming year because of the level principal, 20 years, at 3.3%, by the way, which we're very, very happy with and working with all the towns, and especially Chris Clark, who's been a steadfast member of our school building committee, as well as participants in deciding on how the financing logic would go. So looking at FY20, you may recall, we did some small, short-term borrowing of about $7 million. We ultimately borrowed $75 million in total, and as a part of that, paid off that short-term borrowing, which went into an assessment of $910,000 last year for the new building, of which $895,000 was for the debt, and the other, about $15,000 was the short-term interest. The short-term borrowing we did. So I see that payment going down, just because of the amortization schedule first, and then the decline in the enrollment and the enrollment percentage as a percentage of the total enrollment at Cape Cod Tech. So all factors would lead to a lower percentage. What that would look like, as I speak to you right now, I don't have that number in front of me, but it will be a pretty good magnitude lower than for FY20, and that's for the cost of the school. Just a little bit on the cost of the school and where we are with that project for the citizens. We broke ground in January. In October of this year, we reached the two-year anniversary of the vote, where 75% of the residents of the 12 towns voted to build this facility. And once again, want to thank all of them, but also especially the voters in Harwich who did that on that day. So we are pleased that that's true. We broke ground in January of this year. The steel was finished in May, late May, and we hope to be tight to the weather before the holiday break in December. So great builders from Marshfield got the ultimate contract. You may have read in the papers that that was 12 million. The construction budget was 12 million under budget from a $104 million estimated construction budget. It came in 12 million under that. Now, the MSBA comes in and takes $6 million of that right away. I'm sure that the Monomoy Regional knows how that works. They don't miss a trick at the Mass School Building Authority. By the way, they've been a great partner, if there's anybody representing the MSBA here today. So we hope to be moving in in June, and that we think that will be a fun process with students coming in in September. with students coming in in September, with a ribbon cutting around that time, if not, barring parking restrictions that may leak into the October timeframe. So, that's just a little update on that. With regards to the operating budget, as I said, I would see that the, the budget falling in the 2% to 3% range when, when all said and done. We are trying to accommodate 47 more students. Most, most of that can be done with current funding, and we have a lot of unknowns in moving to a new building, which we're ironing out during the budget process. But I would see the operating assessment not increasing, this for FY21, because, primarily because of that drop in enrollment for the town of Harwich. So, with that, I would stop there.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Questions for Bob? Comments? Don?
Don't want to lose the opportunity, because you've heard me say it before, now that you're in front of us, and you'll hear it again. As you build the building, I still am pitching to see Jimmy Marsline's name on a field, on the entrance, on the building, just something. You wouldn't be here if it weren't for him.
I totally agree with, with, Cape Cod Tech would not be here without, without Jimmy Marsline. I agree. I have a board to, to deal with as well, and there are some things being discussed, but nothing, nothing concrete, nothing I can promise today.
You can tell him I asked.
Okay, thank you.
Ed?
Just a, a question, I know after you get the new building up, you will be demolishing the existing building. When we demolished Harwich High School, the concrete pieces that were available were, for the most part, taken to the transfer station and used to build the fishing reefs that we've done so far. There's a lot more reef that is permitted out there, and I was wondering if that building committee had been discussing the disposition of those concrete.
They have. We did receive a formal letter from the town of Dennis, but also the town of Harwich has, through, through your town administrator, has also expressed interest in that we want to contribute more to that reef, definitely, as a part of that, the demolition process.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, Steve, anything else? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not gonna give the pitch for this weekend?
Why am I blanking?
The fair.
The fair. Oh, the craft fair. Oh, yes. Oh, you just bailed me out. Okay, great. Skills USA is our number one, right after, and followed by FFA, which helps our horticulture students, but all of our other 14 technical programs compete in Skills USA, which is an industry organization where they go through regional, state, and national competitions ultimately, and there's a lot of fundraising goes along with that. The craft fair, that's being held at our school this weekend, this coming weekend, I think it's the 9th and the 10th, or the 8th and the 9th, is at our school. There is plenty of parking right now. There's a little bit of disruption from the construction, but come on over to the craft fair for our Skills USA, to get some great arts and crafts, and support our students at Skills USA. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
I'm all tech night right now, I'm sorry, tech night. 7th and 8th graders, don't forget.
Yeah.
Mr. Carpenter.
I'll start with some good news from Monomoy. We just finished this past week our NIASC accreditation, and if we look back 10 years ago, it was a NIASC accreditation at Harwich High School that was one catalyzing events that brought Monomoy together. It was that need to build a new high school, to provide a high-quality place for the children of Harwich, and then ultimately, the children of Chatham to learn. And the chair of the visiting, a quite glowing recommendation, I mean, assessment, verbal assessment to, to those that gathered, but one of the things that really stood out is they were really commenting on what a facility we have at, at Monomoy Regional High School for our- In fact, I think they were referring to all those involved in the building project, and the upkeep of the building as rock stars. Following that, we just, I think it was two weeks ago, held a meeting formally closing out the Monomoy Regional High School Building Committee, and, you know, the last little piece of funding was, was discussed there and at the school committee meeting. That project not only happened on time, but also happened $8 million under what the taxpayers in our two voted upon. And so, you know, my hope is, when we talk about playground projects and things like that, not every project goes over, over budget. This one came in way beneath budget, in part because of the stewardship, and I know Ed was one of the, the chairs on that building committee, but it was great stewardship that really helped that project. Other good news that we can celebrate in our district, I, I've shared with our school committee and with the selectmen, the state goes through and does an accountability rating of school districts, and our school district has the highest accountability rating of K-12 school districts on Cape Cod. We have the highest accountability rating of a middle school on Cape Cod. Our Harwich Elementary School is one of the highest-rated elementary schools on Cape Cod. Our high school has seen dramatic improvements in its accountability rating, and so the school district's really going along well when we took, when we look at it from that perspective.
Can you explain what accountability rating is?
So, they look at, they look at everything from your testing scores to your student attendance. It's, it's really a, a, a broad range of looking at school districts. I, I think prior to this new accountability system, the state looked at just, you know, what were your MCAS scores, but not necessarily what were your graduation rates. So, it's looking at the whole picture of everything that really, that counts for students' long-term success in life, as, you know, sort of packaged into the Department of Education's accountability ratings. So, you know, so again, we can be proud of where we've, you know, where we've come over the last several years, and what that accountability rating is now. In terms of enrollment, maybe this is the other side of the, of, of the coin. I, I think Bob was sharing that, that while the numbers of Harwich students attending Cape Tech are down a little bit, on some level, I can talk about a good problem for Harwich when it comes to Monomoy. The numbers are up slightly this year, so in the sheik that I distributed, the, the enrollment for Harwich this year over last in our schools is, we're up three students in Harwich. We're actually down 25 students in Chatham. And Cape Cod are struggling to maintain young families here, and, and we're seeing, you know, we're seeing a slight decline year after year of young families and children in the schools, but at least for this year in Harwich, we see that number going up a little bit. We see the Chatham number going down rather, you know, you know, rather precipitously. That ends up creating a situation when it comes to, you know, how the assessment rolls forward. So, the, the second page that I passed out to you has the three-year rolling averages when it comes to the foundation enrollment. So, the foundation enrollment is the number of students from Harwich and the number of students from Chatham that attend public schools other than Cape Tech. So, if you attend a charter school, if you, if you're going school choice to another school district but live in Harwich, and so it is, it's all of the students that were fiscally responsible for. That number over the last, the last roughly 10 years, from FY13 through FY21, has slowly shifted almost 4% towards Harwich from, you know, from Chatham. So, we're seeing a gradual shift roughly year after year in that fewer and fewer students happen in Har- or, sorry, in Chatham, and relative to, to Harwich. Again, on some level, you could look at it as a good problem to have, in that there are still young families. Chatham, when we were at the Chatham Board of Selectmen last week, the big conversations there are, Chatham has a Chatham 360 Committee that's really looking at, what as a town do they need to do to attract and retain young families in town, and are looking at a number of initiatives, including, you know, a universal preschool for four-year-olds in the town of Chatham, to try to find ways to keep the young families there. Again, in Harwich, it's, you know, if, if we look over the, over the last 10 years, we're seeing a, a slight decline in the number of children, but not a decline at the rate that Chatham is declining, and that's what has sort of shifted the, the foundation enrollment percentages slightly towards Harwich, is that the rate at which the loss of children is happening is slightly more for Chatham than Harwich. So, we see, looking into FY21, a, a rather large blip in the, that enrollment percentage, because it's based on a three-year rolling average. So, from FY20 to FY21, we're seeing a .9% shift in the foundation enrollment, which likely translates, once we get the, you know, get all the other numbers and start budget, is before, you know, before any sort of, you know, budget increase is talked about, there's already a .9% shift towards Harwich in, in our budget, is what we can roughly anticipate, based on the enrollment, the foundation enrollment numbers. You'll notice is the next line below, transportation is based on actual students sitting in seats over the last three years, and that one has a slightly less of a percent increase, so it's a .5% percent increase in that. Again, I anticipate that we'll see a, a slight increase in the overall assessment towards Harwich, that's gonna be a little bit higher than what, what will happen towards, towards Chatham, simply because of that enrollment shift that, you know, that we have. I'll stop there and answer questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, just out of curiosity, because it doesn't, you don't have that here, what is the all-in number for kids that you could have enrolled in Monomoy Regional High School?
The, I, I, so the high school, the high school was built for 700. And then, just to, to kind of give you a picture of where we are, where I anticipate us being, and also to give you sort of a, a look at the thought that's gone into things over the last, over the last six years. When we first built the high school, I, I think, just like Bob, I, I think Cape Tech, it's avenue building, you have a lot of interest, you see enrollment heading that direction, which is good for Cape Tech. It was good for us, and we recognized that we needed to go and start to manage the number of school choice children coming in, in our lower grades, to make sure that down the road, we didn't end up in a situation where we overpopulated a high school that was built for 700. Right now, the high school has, is at 6, 640. We anticipate another 35 students there next year, and it will, over the course of the next handful of years, tick up probably to 700, and maybe just exceed it, but then soon after that tick down. So, you know, so I, I wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, coming back to the town saying, "Look, we need to do some sort of interior construction, because we need to create classrooms, so we're not gonna, we won't have to do that." But it was a building built for 700. We're going to be reaching that 700 number in the next couple of years. Right now, the, the cohort in 7th grade, which is our biggest cohort of students, is 184 students, so we'll see most of that 184 students come up to the high school next year. We have 124 students graduating, and that's gonna happen for about the next three years, before we start seeing the kids that are in the, the 2nd, 3rd, 4th grades sort of trickle on up, which are smaller than some of the current cohorts at the middle school and high school.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Scott. Chris, you want to talk about Cap- we have Capital Outlay members here, I know.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have worked on, the Capital Outlay Committee and myself, we have prepared, and this is dated October 28th, a, an overview of the spending plan. I think what I'll do is, because I, I've kind of gone over this, glossed over this a couple of times, but I'm gonna take a, a couple of minutes just to kind of run through some of the larger elements. For FY21, under administration, we, we do not have any requests. We, I was hoping to try to have, if there was sufficient money, to try to do the sidewalk on 28. There was not sufficient money in free cash, so we moved that off to 2022. On the Affordable Housing Trust is $550,000. The funding source would be from the CPC, so that is a request that's before them for tomorrow night. Deacon's Folly, a land acquisition of about $1.2 million. Half that would be, theoretically, half that would be open space, the other half could be housing. That is still kind of a work in process. Cemetery has some efforts that they're trying to do. Their, one of their elements is that they have a grant that they're attempting to get to do some work at Island Pond Arboretum. I believe that was mentioned at town meetings, that work is continuing on. Community Center has no projects for 21. Conservation, no projects for 21. Engineering has a, what's called an MS4, which is taking certain drainage areas throughout the community that go into certain, certain ponds and, and other water features, and we have to make some improvements to take out some of the contaminants that go into the municipal drainage plan. That can be done on a per-unit basis, so the request was $100,000, just due to funding. We'll try to make that at 50. That should do, I think it's about $5,000 per unit, so that will get us some units accomplished. The crossing lights at Depot is a CPC request. That's the, the crossing lights for people that walk. On the facility maintenance at DPW, the Brooks Library roof, I do recommend funding for that, $148,500 under free cash, and these are my recommendations. The column for the selectmen are still waiting to be filled in, once you have a, a full review. On ADA, there's a request for a grant to be submitted for $350,000. If that grant was to be obtained, Matt Hart's been doing a lot of work on that. That money could be used to implement a ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act review that we had done on different town buildings. So, that, if it doesn't get done, then it would be funded by the town in the outer years. Replace the transfer station scale decking. That is something that has indicated that needs to be done of a higher priority. The scale, we actually changed the scale probably about two or three years ago, to actually weigh the, the different vehicles going in and out. This is actually, the, the decking around it is also now in rough shape, 55%. An outstanding job for the town. He had, the cultural center had a generator that was anticipated to be about $70,000. It's his intent to maybe take that off the plan and reuse the generator at Station 2 at the cultural center, so it can have some emergency generator backup. So, you know, he's a creative guy that, in this case, may save the town about $70,000. On other items for 21, the fire department has put in, the fire department did take a few items off as well. They had lockers that they had asked for last year. Go to a neighbor town and get some lockers for, for free. They have an ambulance replaced on here, and the ambulance would be funded under this plan, under town administrator, and also the Capital Outlay Committee was in concert on, on all these requests, so they're, they're one in the same. The $378,000 for the ambulance would be funded from free cash. $20,000 for air pack replacement, which would be hopefully a, a grant program with $380,000 coming from a grant for air pack replacement. Those are the equipment that the firefighters need when they go into different buildings. And the chief had last year, had put in pumper and a ladder. The combined cost of those two items was $2 million. He has decided, or departmentally, he has decided to buy what's called a quint, which is a pumper and a ladder combined in one, that has some functionality. So, that's $1.1 million. We do not have sufficient funds to cover that, so that would have to be funded as a debt exclusion, would be the recommendation by administration. The golf department has various projects. All the golf department is funded through their improvement fund or their golf budget, so we can say it's mostly the improvements to the course. One thing that I thought was interesting that came out of that is design and feasibility of a three-hole practice and putting course. So, Roman Greer, the, the director, is contemplating, working with the golf committee, to look at doing a additional three holes, and having like, school teams rotate through, so they can rotate- like, school teams rotate through, so they can rotate through three times, and get a nine-hole experience out of that, which I, I thought that was a creative way to, kind of, if people don't want to spend four or five hours doing the full 18, they have an option of doing something a, a little bit different. Harbor Master has projects in outer years, so I'm not going to refer to that. The Library also, outer year projects, Natural Resources, the same, planning. Police only has their TASER replacement, that's a fifth year, with three years to pay, so that is the final year of a five-year lease arrangement. Public Works has their road project, their road maintenance program, this has been a longstanding program, unfortunately, this was not funded last year by the, by the voters, so it was not approved, but generally, what we have done historically, we've had about 700,000 for debt exclusion, that we actually pay off within five years, so that's constantly rolling, so taxpayer-wise, if we pay off about 300,000 each year, that doesn't increase or decrease, it stays pretty much the same, so it is tax-neutral, and allows us to continue to maintain the roads. And then, Chapter 90, which is the gas tax money, comes back to the town, from the gas tax that people pay, and that's about 700,000, so about 1.4 million dollars is allocated in that. And then, on vehicles, he had sought to have three vehicles replaced, he being Lincoln Hoover, the, the Director, 175 for the six-wheel dump truck, basically insufficient funds exist to do that, so that was not recommended. The Ford E250 van, 28, was 35,000, that is contemplated, and the catch basin cleaner, 215,000 was also contemplated to be funded out of that. On the Youth and Rec, they have three programs, all their programs are, this funding is being sought through the CPC funding, so that's Brook and the, the Memorial Field fencing project, and Sand Pond revitalization, and White House Field lighting improvements, so those are the three projects. Town Clerk has a few in the outer years. On wastewater, the, the numbers that we, that have been submitted, and that still is a little bit of a work in process, but obviously, we've had some fairly extensive discussions on where we are with that. The formal request is to do the Phase Three, on the DHY obligation of about 1.5 million dollars in 21, and then, 8.4 million dollars is the contemplated amount for Phase Two, Contract Three. I have that in there, really, for planning purposes, that's something I think the Board's going to have to give some thought to, in terms of that, timing-wise, both of those would have to be done as debt exclusion. Water has a, a new source exploration, about 250,000, that would come from water revenues. In total, the total request that came in was 18, 18, basically 18.4 million dollars, with, I, I think it's important, in terms of some of those numbers, about 4 million of that is CPC-related funding requests, so, out of that, and then, 9 million dollars, more than half, almost 10 million dollars, is wastewater. So, a fairly healthy breakdown of larger, smaller, larger projects, a smaller number of larger projects. And then, on the last page, I, I did take a stab at going through, and providing for the different funding, so I have that broken out, where free cash would be about 866,000. Community Preservation, that number, I think, needs to be adjusted, depending upon what the Committee actually votes. And then, debt exclusion, under the one here, would be about 11, 11.7 million. Grants, 873,000, Golf Funds, just 100, 200, Chapter 90, 700,000, and 250 for Water Enterprise Funds, with the operating budget of about 50. The other two items that I have here, and, and this, we will make sure we have it online, free cash is about 1.4 million dollars, the 866 I just alluded to on the capital, we allocated 400,000 for snow and ice, no funding for OPEB, additional funding for OPEB, and no funding for stabilization. The Cultural Center subsidy, we've had that for six years, I did decrease that from 125 down to 100, I think that we are making more revenue on that topic. Chamber of Commerce, we traditionally fund 30,000, Libraries, 20,000, those are the two other libraries. Cultural Council, 3600, 15,000 for small capital, and then unpaid, about 10,000, so that 1.4 million dollars would be allocated, recommended to be allocated in that way. Hopefully, with snow and ice, if we have a mild winter, we'll have a little bit more to put towards, maybe building reserves again. And then, on Community Preservation, they have a, them, 3 million dollars, they do have, and I have it broken out by which bucket the money goes in, so you can't, it's just, for instance, Housing has about 500,000 in their housing bucket, the requests are only 120,000, so even if they funded all the requests, there would still would be a reserve of money available left in that account. The only reason for really putting this out was the request total was almost 4 million dollars, and they have 3 million dollars in which to spend. And CPC, just for folks that may not be as familiar, is money that's really dedicated, tax money that's dedicated for, really for specific purposes, recreation activities in the community, open space, historic, and affordable housing, the four initiatives that are attempted to be accomplished using that funding source.
And Chris, this, the CPC table we have does include the debt payment, so there's money, there's additional money coming in that goes to debt payment?
Yes, there's, that's right, I think it's about 530,000 for the debt payment, the debt payment is the land bank debt, and that is paid off in 2024. And then, I just have some charts and such for people to look, to get a sense, but I, I think that's probably a pretty good overview of the Capital Outlay. And again, just want to thank the Capital Outlay Committee, they did not vote the sewer numbers, so I put those in there more for planning, because that's still very much a work in process for getting the, the information.
Any questions for Chris? Don?
It's not so much a question, but I do want to say something at the risk of having all four of my tires flattened, before I get out of here. Other towns, I hope this isn't construed as being a heresy, but other towns have looked at the CPC level of funding, and what the percentage from the town versus the state is, in an effort to try to recapture some of the borrowed amount for the wastewater projects. At some point in time, we should have discussion, because that is one of the, yarmulke by contrast, in their scenarios, because of actions like that, and some other things they've done, expect to have a negligible effect on their tax rate as they sequence this.
No, I totally agree, Don, especially when the land bank's paid off, as we figure, that's coming up pretty quickly, and that opens that up. Okay? Thank you, Chris. You're on the hotel for Finance as well, or we have, is anyone from Cap, I see Capital Outlay here, anyone else want to make a comment on the Capital Outlay Committee? Pete, Angelo, Lorraine, your guys are okay. Okay? We'll pick then up on the Jack Brown and Chris on Finance.
I don't know if Jack had anything from the Finance Committee's perspective about the whole budget.
I think, I think, I forgot someone members that had, who looked at it, so I got to get them up to speed, just right away.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll, and we have a series of meetings going forward, we should discuss all of this in great detail, so this was basically like, a preliminary discussion set the stage. As, as selectmen goes, we're trying to operate the town, but we have great concern over the money we're spending as well, so we keep going back and re-looking at these. We've asked to, to minimize our increase in budgets to two and a half, 2% in that ballpark, it's hard with the commitments we've already made, but we're having serious discussions on those. We'll be looking at, also, Cap Outlay is a huge concern, because 18 million dollars, nothing to laugh about, we need to figure out how to pay for that, and to balance that with priorities, so we have a serious discussions going forward, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of participation from town residents, either by showing up here, or by emailing us or contacting us, we look at these priorities. Moving then to contracts. Joe, you're going to handle the contracts today?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Items A and B were presented to you last week, what we were waiting on was a return of signed copies from the vendors. I spoke with the DPW Director earlier today, and despite the suggestions from the vendor, the road saw contract has not been returned yet, last year it was in the mail and expected to arrive today. I would ask the indulgence of the Board if the Board were willing to award the contract, and then, once we have it, we can circulate for signatures. You know, this was through no fault of staff, certainly through DPW and the folks that worked on it, we just don't have the original on hand yet, from the, from the vendor. Both this contract and the next one have been reviewed by the Finance Director, and has confirmed funding, so when those arrive, we do expect her to attach her signature without question.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments? Joe, if we can't get the saw contract due, what's she saying to us for not to wait another week until we actually get the contract, is it?
We, we have a supply on hand, so we could wait a week if that's the Board's desire.
Well, it's only because you expect more responsive contractors.
Understood completely.
I don't want to hold a grudge, but it doesn't mean anything. And what's the sense of the Board?
As soon as we get it, we'll sign it. Understood.
I mean, it's a done deal, we're going to sign it, but it's just kind of aggravating that we sit there playing games with you.
On behalf of the team, even staff, we agree.
I know staff has been pressuring him to do so, because we've been having this discussion.
Absolutely.
Ed?
My question is, is, what's the purpose?
The purpose of not delaying?
Yeah, of, of waiting for, I mean, you know, what, if the saw contractor doesn't sign it, then we don't contract with it, and we move on to somebody else. We've, we've agreed to terms.
Don?
The point is, we're signing it, I'd like to see what we're signing. I'm pretty sure that the one member who's not here would say the same thing.
But what we're signing, we, we, we can see, because it's, it's in our packet.
If I could ask you, Joe and Chris, I mean, what, does it make it any more difficult? Does, I mean, what do you guys recommend here? Is it, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, we're not signing a contract until we actually see it, but it's getting approved.
Yeah, so what, what you have in your packet is a, an accurate reflection of the actual contract that was sent.
Right.
We received a scanned copy, we have now received a link copy. What that means is, the vendor would not have original ink to the contract, the town accountant, and the Board would. Beyond that, I really couldn't tell you why it needs to be original.
So, your recommendation would be to move ahead?
Is this going to hurt anything if we wait a week? Or, or if we don't?
On, on this particular one, I would argue no. There's a completely different argument for the next one.
Okay. Let's wait a week then, just get, since we've been asking for original contracts to have in our paperwork. Explain the next one to us.
So, the next one, quite simply, is the, the vendor did return the original ink contract, however, not in time for the Finance Director to sign, before she went away on vacation. However, the Finance Director had reviewed the contract and signed a, a copy of that. I am asking that the Board do award and sign the contract, and as soon as the Finance Director's back tomorrow, we'll get her signature, so that the Harbor Master can proceed with
I would like to see what the Board wants, I would like to move ahead, just as time stands at this point, we delayed it to get, this is what we discussed last week, that there's, the feeling was, we probably didn't use the correct form the first time, that was corrected.
Correct, everything was corrected.
Now, everything's in place, we have finance to look at, so.
Invited by staff, invited by insurance carrier, and by council.
I would entertain a motion that we can discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the Allen's Harbor Jetty Project Contract, GEI Consulting, $57,000.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. So, discussion then.
Well, you know, it, I have a, you know, if, if we're, in my, I still haven't gotten a good reason why, in approving the contract, we need to see original signatures, but I mean, if we're going to stand firm on, on one contract, then we ought to stand firm on all of them, I mean, you know, it's.
So, if it matters, Mr. Chairman, we do have the vendor's original ink signature, we would have the Board's original ink signature, the Finance Director did have an original ink signature and a facsimile copy last week, but it was not the copy that the Board has in the signature files, so the vendor has signed, and we do have it on site.
Which we don't have for the first one.
Correct.
That's the difference then.
Don?
We're flipping here, positions, I, to the extent that, that the Finance Director does come in, and, by the way, Michael's request wasn't just to fill out the, our packet for the contract, but the documents related, which had to do with the email string about what contract forms we have, if, if that can be put in a packet in the future, I'd be willing to vote for this tonight.
We, we can put that in the packet in the future.
And this is a very important contract.
Okay. Anything other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You're going to go for it?
Yeah. You know.
3-1?
No, it's 4, 4-0. I, I take your point, it'd be consistent. But this is.
A lot of this stuff is just nonsense that we're doing.
And then, the last item under contract, Mr. Chairman, is, as was mentioned last week, retired Deputy Chief, Police Chief Tom Gagnon, had received from MEMA about two weeks ago, notification that a FEMA reimbursement has been awarded to the town. As you can see in the memo there, FEMA has awarded the town 4% in the fall of 2012. It has been vetted, we've confirmed everything, so my recommendation would be that the Board have a motion to accept the award of the FEMA reimbursement funds totaling $46,865.49, and further to authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate and necessary paperwork to access said funds, that would be the State's standard contract form, and their backup materials. In talking with the retired Deputy Chief, who all credit goes to facilitating this for the Board tonight, he also alerted to me to the fact that we may be receiving at least notice sometime in the future regarding the Emergency Measures Grant, which is a smaller amount.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept this.
Hmm, let me think a second here.
Six-year, six-year-old.
I, I, I move the language that Joe said right up until in keeping, that was the whole motion.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Do, do we have the original ink signature with the Commonwealth?
I bend my morals when people are sending us money.
And you're not going to, you're not going to get it from them until you sign it.
We have to sign it first, in this case, we're the vendor, so to speak.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Just on principle, because this is just really chicken shit stuff that's going on.
We don't want to throw it back, it could take them another six years to, to follow through on this.
Would that be recorded as 4-0?
No.
Yes, it can.
Can't be.
He goes for it. He goes for it.
Chris, town administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I have several things this evening. One on the RJV contract, I was asked to do some research in terms of that. We don't have the material ready to go for tonight. We did do a letter after the meeting in which the board approved it. The way that process works is we need to send a authorization or acknowledgement that there's an intent to award, and then the contractor will sign the necessary paperwork and get the necessary bonds. So that is in process right now. The next is, we had already brought up about the, the vote relative to the playground demolition. I was asked to provide a verification that Montomoy had done that, which they had. I put that in, in the packet. And then I was also asked, under the noise bylaw, to actually do a little bit of research in terms of where did the hundred and fifty feet come from? So we are in the process of putting a request into the town attorney to get some material for background on that. Next item is on Chief Procurement Officer. I did go through the process, was recertified as Procurement Officer. And then we did do a budget discussion last week, Mr. Chairman, and we did put online last Thursday night.
Thursday night, yeah.
The, the Harwich budget discussion, the work that Carol had done, and then I had done some regional elements. So those two pieces are online, under the accountant section of our
Good.
of our website. The last one, I'm going to try to get through this. I just want to kind of make a statement at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Chairman, you had indicated that the, the board and I have had some discussions. I know I have publicly said that I have been having concerns in terms of my family, which will necessitate me taking some time, and I appreciate the board working with me in terms of that. I've also thought about kind of my time as the administrator in Harwich, and would like to read the, the following statement, that "I have decided to not seek reappointment as town administrator and to pursue other opportunities and to be more available to my family in the short term. I have enjoyed my time in Harwich and think the world of the staff and the board members that I have had the chance to interact with during my time. I believe that much has been accomplished during my tenure, including providing fiscal stability, meeting the challenges of new schools, wastewater, and achieving a triple-A bond rating, to name only a few. I have had more, I have more to offer to another municipality or organization. The Board of Selectmen are in concurrence with this decision, hence the agreement, and they have thanked me for my service and are eager to move on for the selection process for a new town administrator. I will, I will be, continue to be on a leave of absence for approximately two months, and then I will enter a consulting period in which I will receive compensation through to the end of my existing contract, which is June thirtieth." So it's been a, a pretty tough stretch, and I do this, I think, in the, in the best interest of myself and my family. And certainly, I, I never, in any places that I've ever worked, want to harm any organization that I've ever worked. I've always had a standard where I like to think I leave things better than I found them, and I think I have met that standard, but I also think it's, it's time that we make a change. So with that, I just wanted to kind of publicly announce that and thank the board for its understanding.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much. I have a little to add to that, except that we'll take this time in the next couple of months to, to reassess where, where we're going and get, and get ready for the upcoming year. And you'll still be with us for a couple of weeks to help us prepare the budgets, and so we'll go through that process.
Yeah, one thing on that, Mr. Chairman, it, it does say that I will, and I will be in the office through November fifteenth, and then I will not be available. I did get word today that I, one of my family members has a doctor's appointment in Boston on Tuesday in the afternoon, so this will be my last day as town administrator, or last meeting as town administrator. So I just wanted to also acknowledge that. And just in terms of people with the suddenness or the, the quickness of this, it's really by mutual understanding, and I appreciate Larry very much. You know, I'm not one to prolong things. I like to make a decision and move on, and I think you're the same way, and I appreciate that in you and, and the board members.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we'll move on to your selectman's reports, and Don?
Sure, follow that. I appreciate the sentiments. The community, the Cultural Center on Sunday held an event to raise money for the Children's Center. And as usual, and as totally expected, it was a great event. It was set up very well. Carolyn and Erica did a terrific job managing it and have our appreciation.
Ed?
That's good, Steve.
Steve?
Nothing in particular, I, you know, with, with Chris's announcement, I just want him to know how much we appreciate how he's handled us and his contribution to this town, and is obviously very pertinent for the town and how it moves forward. So more to discuss as we go into the next several months, but thank you.
Yeah, I obviously agree with that, Ed.
Yeah, I also agree that I want to thank Chris for all that he's done for the town over the years and for the way he has approached where we are right now. And we'll move on. I couldn't find a date to make an announcement, and I finally did find it. This is a concert that's going to be held at Montomoy Regional High School on Thursday, November twenty-first. It's at seven thirty PM. It's a group, it's a concert called Child's Play, and Child's, Child's Play refers to an organization that Robert Childs has formed. It's a nonprofit foundation that raises to support students who are going into the field of instrument making, specifically violins and violas, which has been Robert's craft all his life. He is, in addition to being a fine musician, an excellent craftsman, and he's held these, these concerts over the last ten years, principally in Boston, Providence, and New York every year, and they have anywhere from ten to twenty. The, the thing about them are all of the musicians, who are some of the world's best in their field, whether it be Irish or Scottish or symphonic violin. They all donate their time and only get the cost of their transportation and expenses paid, and they all play on instruments that Mr. Childs made. This is his final tour this year, and will be the third performance of the concert in the four, four-concert series. About three years ago, he was down and attended a concert that we held here and was so impressed with the Montomoy Regional School District Auditorium's acoustics and the support of the, the audience for a fiddling presentation that he actually asked us if we'd be interested in, in hosting one of his concerts. So it'll raise funds for Child's Play, as well as raising funds for the Harwich Grand Bay Festival Scholarship Program. It's a twofer. I urge you to come, it's a wonderful show.
I accept the motion too, adjourned?
I'll move.
Second?